I'll make a motion to approve it, Jimmy.
All right, need a second?
Oh, I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, the first new business, request approval to submit comments to the Lincoln National Forest in reference to the draft forest plan and draft environmental impact statement, more specifically. All right. Let me all see, this was, this is all comments to this?
Okay, no, I hadn't, when did this come, when did, when did this happen? This morning?
I just sent this to you right now. And this is from Bobby and all of them coming in on just some wording.
Okay.
Some deals through, the sections through us.
Okay.
So, um, I visited with RB a little bit this morning on this, and like he was saying, this was a kind of a slam dunk deal, wish we had a little more time, but he's gonna look over these and see if the wording would, would help to, how to do, get that put in.
Well, you did a good, you did a good job on, I, I, I think we got a good foundation, you know, I mean, you laid a good foundation with the letter that you wrote, and then, yeah, I mean, if there's any other interjection or anything we could add or take away or whatever, but I was impressed.
I've got a lot of them from Chavas County, they did a lot of work on the resolutions and letters.
Boy, that's good.
I didn't take all that credit, but, um, together, I really wish we had a month or two months to dive into that, that plan, and it was really big as part, but we didn't have that time.
Yep.
The comments that Gerald provided this morning were all, um, good, and I'd like to, I have put them in on my computer, and, um, so let's have to reprint them before, before you sign, but I think those were all good suggestions, and I probably will keep typing those, and, uh, perhaps some other good comments, but really what we're doing with all three of these documents is preserving our standing, and that we do need to see legal recourse down the road, and, um, making the distinction, the Forest Service does not cooperate with us as they're required to do, and they believe they ignored our comprehensive plan and our ordinance, um, which are in fact, are in line with federal law on cooperation.
Sure.
So we're getting those points out there, that way it was a record, um, if we do have to pursue, um, the legal route.
Well, reaching out to Chavas County and building a network with them, I mean, there's not a smarter move, I don't think, than to, you know, I mean, the more, you know, we get, we get a letter like this, we get a resolution, then we sit back going, well, how do we put teeth in it, and how do we make it, how do we strengthen it, but I think that's the way we do that, is by joining, uh, Chavas County and any other conservative-minded county that would stand with us, um, we could build a network like that just to support these guys on their, you know, on your efforts, if all the counties are behind you, um, yeah, I think that that's, I think that's definitely a, a move in the, in the right direction.
Have, have we contacted Lincoln County or Eddy County, for trying to get them to come on and support? Have, do you know if, if Chavas County has contacted Eddy over there?
They contacted who?
Eddy County?
I'm, I'm not sure, I haven't heard from them, uh, I, I do, I do know that, uh, FLLAC has made a special request to be involved in, in the effort, uh, so it might be something that you wanna think of, because they, they wanna be involved.
Absolutely.
Federal land council.
Absolutely. And that's Walt Kaufman is, is, uh...
Yeah, that's Bebo's on there, and John Lewis on there, who else?
John Lewis, who, who, maybe Travis, or that land council.
Okay. Yeah, the bigger alliance that we can make, and, uh, and to, um, Roy, as far as, uh, you know, strengthening our position, I don't know if, like, a public hearing, I don't know if that's something that would give us that stronger standing as we move forward with this, if we, you know, if we need to have a public hearing where we publicly advertise it, and we get public comment off of it, and just maybe a petition, you know, I mean, I've thought about that in the past, too, um, I thought about that with the Mexican gray wolf back in Catching County, you know, I mean, if, if the people of the county didn't want the wolf, you'd think they could put a petition before the people and get eighty percent of the constituents of that county to vote on it, and then, then it's, then it's the duty of the board to heed to the will of the people, to, to pass these resolutions, and then, as our sheriff stands with us as well, I feel like we just, we ought to have some kind of strength through all of that, you know, I mean, just to build that, just to build that momentum on the ground level, you know, and even if we had to have a public hearing to include Chavas County, too, you know, maybe if it was a joint, I don't know, I just feel like, the more we can, the more we can express our unified position, the stronger, the, the better, the, the more success we're gonna have as we move, you know, I mean, this is, this is really the face of the grassroots right here, you know, I mean, whenever you put your foot down against the federal government, and, uh, and that's pretty much what we're doing right here through not accepting that plan, so, um, yeah, I don't know what this one's gonna look like as it moves forward, but I know that it's critical in order for us to survive in rural county, uh, rural county.
Bobby, could you come up and kinda give us a little, uh, Bebo gave me a phone number of a gentleman up in Albuquerque, way up, pretty high up in the Forest Service.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and when I was talking to Bebo, it was very loud, and I was having a hard time hearing him, so I asked him to explain all this to Bobby, so we'll get Bobby to explain what he was talking about.
Yes, sir, my name is Bobby.
Morning Bobby.
I'm Bobby Jones, and I chair the Otero County Division of the Forest Board, just for the record, and, uh, as for, you're the attorney here, there's a thing that was thought about coming in this morning, too, on the terminology we're working with, is consultation, coordination, and cooperation, those three terms come in statute, and that's the Public of Queensland Improvement Act nineteen seventy-eight, section eight, most of the printings of that law, you won't see that in there, you got to go back to the statutes at large, but that, that, those terms were taken just because of their legal definition, and, uh, that says, all of this is, plus with the Forest Service, they're, you know how they are, they don't acknowledge anything, they don't even accept, uh, US versus New Mexico nineteen seventy-eight over the water, but, uh, that's where that has come from, and it's statutory, wasn't able to admit it or not, and, uh, that's just what I was thinking about coming into town this morning, 'cause that's where that came from, and, uh, the other thing, Gary Zies, the guy that Bebo Lee talked to, is, uh, in the regional office up there, and he's over Travis Mosley and these, uh, issues they're working with right now, and he said, now, there again, you have to, this is the Forest Service got, that, uh, they weren't gonna manage, as wilderness, these lands with wilderness characteristics, unless they were roadless areas, and that, that's key, roadless area, but if they go back, like the BLM's supposed to be doing, and going according to the Wilderness Act and the criteria, uh, the Wilderness Act set up the lands with wilderness characteristics, uh, they haven't got anything up there that they can be used for lands with wilderness characteristics, this county and much of the federal lands have been, uh, inventoried twice for wilderness.
Have, have they had the opportunity to look at that PowerPoint presentation that shows all the improvements and stuff to those areas that they're trying to de-wilderness areas?
Well, now, that I don't know.
Has Travis, Travis?
If they showed that to Forest Service.
Travis did, didn't he?
Yeah.
And Travis didn't have any kind of a response to it? You know, I mean, why do we have a Forest Supervisor if he can't respond to the issues that are going on right now that we're facing in our, in his region of the forest? I, I think that Travis Mosley needs to be much more responsive than Travis Mosley's been being, I think Travis Mosley's been, um, being disrespectful to the county, and I think Travis Mosley's been being disrespectful to the Otero County Cavalry Association, so Travis Mosley needs to get a phone call from somebody up above him to tell him that he needs to start meeting with us, or we're gonna, or this problem's gonna fester and it's gonna build, because until the Forest Service comes in here and addresses these issues, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get quiet, and we're not gonna go away, we're gonna keep pressing it before them, so, but, uh...
Yeah, anyway, but, uh, so, when you look at it like that, they're not gonna hinder anybody that has improvements out there, whether it's utilities or ranchers or what have you, they weren't gonna keep them from maintaining those improvements, on lands with wilderness characteristics, if it wasn't a roadless area, and, uh, knowing how the Forest Service handles their management, and what they force on people, I don't have much faith in them, in them, uh, gonna do what they say, but, uh, Gary Zies is the guy to talk to, I guess Bebo's got this known, but...
Yeah, I, I got it right here.
Anyway, the, the commission itself probably should contact you, 'cause you got a lot of stroke, more than we do.
Sure.
The other thing that, uh, from a historical perspective on section eight, there was a memorandum of understanding between the state through NMDA, the Range Improvement Task Force, and, uh, allotment owners, or, and the groups they belong to, for section eight hearings, where you can sit down with all those people together and look at the problems or the issues that the Forest Service is working on right now, and what do you get that done, I don't know, but like I say, I don't know the status of that memorandum of understanding currently under this document, Jeff Whitty should, uh, have a pretty good idea, I mean...
We'll give Gary a call and, uh, and, and visit with him a little bit, and let him know that Travis isn't very responsive, because he is above Travis, so, isn't he, and wasn't he one of his, his supervisors?
I'd say he, in some, I don't know what the terminology would be, but he is over, and it may be, uh, natural resources and grazing or something tighter like that that Gary has, and, uh, but, uh, I know y'all know that got Travis Mosley sitting there as a buffer between the, the Forest Service and, uh, y'all.
Yeah.
And he does a good job of just sitting there like a stump, and they just don't answer nothing, no matter how much grief he gets, he's pretty good at that.
Yeah, well, and, you know, and our issues with management at the Forest Services are just not, I mean, you know, this is something, it was what, a year ago, they had the injunction that stopped, that stopped all prescribed burning on our national forests and all uses, because they failed to get the Mexican-spotted alchance to the environmental groups, so the Forest Service gets sued for their failures to provide the data, and who pays at the end? All of the producers that can't access the forest, and all the people that like the forest because the forest burns down, because the Forest Service has been a complete failure, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, it is what it is.
Absolutely correct, there, I also think that, uh, two, in reading the documentation that we've got here on the, these issues, uh, the Forest Service did not do an economic impact analysis, as a natural part.
Absolutely.
But if they do that, then it shows how far off they are.
And then it'll just, it'll really...
Damage, and it would be.
Yeah, then their whole house will fall down on top of it if they do an economic study, because that's gonna prove the devastation to the area that they're gonna cause through their, their plan.
And I think, uh, you know, in this process for this new forest plan that they're working on, the lands with wilderness characteristics is just, uh, one of the issues that's out there, look at that mouse, and what they're doing, that's it, they have no actual peer reviewed science, but yes, they keep going on with what they're using on that mouse, and they're just about ninety to put the gosses out with it, Judy Madaris is next, even though she's trying to get along with them, they're, they're gonna run over her just, just like they've done the rest of them, and I, I, I understand, Dr. Smaller's with the Range Improvement Task Force, they're fixing to begin a study on the mouse, to get some actual science.
Yeah.
'Cause there's a lot of questions to be asked right there about that mouse, and where the reaction lives in a space with waste and decree, that wide as this tape, and, uh, they had some floods up there, so, if that's the only place they live, they should've wiped them out, there shouldn't be any mouse, but, you know, the, but they haven't answered all those questions, and the same way with what we're doing here today.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, if it all draws down to it, I mean, um, we, we, we don't just need this addressed, we need all those issues that you just talked about addressed, you know, and they need to be ju, done openly, and, you know...
Well, that's true, and of course, in times past, the only way you got anything out of them was some sort of litigation, and that's the last place you wanna go, but there again, if it ends up and you got two, the four counties go in on it, you might couldn't afford it then, but you got to build your record right now, you have to start now before you ever, you ever get close to that.
And it'd be a much, um, much more effective legal battle if it's waged off of the county front than it is off of, you know, the individual, like, you look at Jimmy and Francis and all the heck that they went through up there, and all the hope that people around them gave them, just keep fighting, just keep suing, and then they would get great judgments back from the federal government, but then yet, they still, it still, it's like, it doesn't matter what kind of a judgment you get, the fight just continues and all the, I don't know, um...
Well, there's, that's, right now, that's the only avenues they live, you know, but main thing with what you're all are doing, if you can buy some time, something may change, you may be able to get something else in there, but they'll have to tend to, they change, you never know.
But legally, and as far as standing and, and strength, um, the county, you know, I mean, the county would be, we, 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 we have a platform, I think, to really wage a battle for, you know, I mean, as far as constitutional standing, um, and, yeah.
RB, on this, do we need to wait until we make these corrections on some of this, and let you review that before we, uh, approve all these, these three plans?
The, the changes aren't significant, um, the documents will be substantially the same, it's just a little bit of wording here and there, and, uh, adding some words, changing a little language from, uh, adding wilderness characteristics in a few spots, so it's not significant, so, um...
Okay, so go ahead.
Talking to Pam, we can go ahead and vote on them, and then I can, after the meeting, um, we can reprint them and you can sign them.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions for me, that's all I have off the top of my head right now.
Appreciate it Bobby, thank you for coming up in here.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you for all you do, Bobby.
So, any further discussion on, uh, item one? Well, I'd like to make a motion of approval, submit the comment to the Lincoln National Forest in reference to the draft, uh, forest plan and the draft environment impact statement. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, move down to item two, request approval of resolution, uh, number twelve dash one-three dash two-one backslash one-one-zero slash two-three, to address the Lincoln National Forest in reference to the draft forest plan and draft environmental impact statement, more especially the lands with wilderness characteristics, so...
Come on, if I read the resolution?
You go ahead, go ahead.
Resolution twelve dash thirteen dash twenty-one backslash one-ten dash twenty-three, resolution of Otero County opposing the proposed Lincoln National Forest Land Management Plan and Environmental Impact Statement, whereas, the Lincoln National Forest has proposed a Lincoln National Forest Land Management Plan that will govern resource management on public lands administered by the United States Forest Service, within areas of Otero County, and whereas Otero County has a comprehensive management plan, and this plan clearly establishes the land uses that are compatible with the needs of the citizens of Otero County, and whereas Otero County citizens depend upon access to and multiple uses of the public lands is directed through federal and state statutes, it is essential that full and continued use of the natural resources within the county's boundaries, boundaries be maintained in order for the county to have the financial strength to provide the necessary services the citizens of the county depend upon, when the use of these resources are restricted or eliminated, the economy shrinks and essential services are reduced, all activities that occur on the public lands must be closely coordinated with the county in order to ensure such harm does not occur, whereas, after reviewing the USFS plan, it is clear that the USFS failed to review, consider, and identify planning conflicts between Otero County and the proposed plan, and whereas, federal laws such as Federal Land Policy and Management Act, National Environmental, Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and National Forest Management Act, NMFA, require federal agencies to coordinate their planning process with local governments and work on, work to reach consistency with county plans, whereas, Otero County recognizes the need for federal land management agencies to harmonize their planning process with counties, whereas, the USFS plan proposes to designate areas of forest land in Otero County as wilderness, which is inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan, and B, will increase the restrictions on the grazing community, reducing the levels of grazing and increasing the expense on the producer, and designates these areas as wilderness, even though these areas fail to meet the specific definition of wilderness as set forth in the Wilderness Act, as required by law, and creates large areas restricted and potentially inaccessible to the county to fulfill its public health and safety duties, and E, creates areas that will no longer proper, will, create, creates areas that will no longer allow proper wildlife management control, increasing the danger to the Otero County citizens' lives and property, and whereas, in developing the USFS plan, the USFS failed, has failed to coordinate with Otero County, and has failed to allow Otero County to have any meaningful involvement in the development of the plan, and whereas, a substantial portion of Otero County consists of public lands that are managed in a manner which recognizes the nation's need for domestic sources of minerals, food, timber, and fiber from the public lands, and the adoption and implementation of the USFS plan without coordination with the county harms Otero County and its citizens, now therefore, be it resolved that Otero County is hereby rejects the proposed Lincoln National Forest Land Management Plan because the USFS failed to coordinate with Otero County to create the plan, be it further resolved that Otero County requests that a coordination agreement between Otero County and the USFS be created, and the supplemental DEIS be prepared that takes into account the plans and policies of Otero County. Great, great resolution, rolling.
All right, at, at that time, is there any discussing, any other input or any changes anybody would like to add? Perfect. All right, at this time, I'll make a motion for request approval of resolution number twelve dash thirteen dash twenty-one backslash one-ten dash two-three, to address the Lincoln National Forest in reference to the draft forest plan and draft environmental impact statement. At this time, could I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Take us down to item three, request approval to send a letter to Travis Mosley, Lincoln National Forest Supervisor, and this letter reads, Dear Mr. Mosley, at our November meeting, concerned citizens brought to our attention the status of the Lincoln National Forest Draft Land Management Plan and Draft Environmental Impact Statement, we are surprised that you are this far along in the planning process without having coordinated the draft plan with the county, after reviewing the Lincoln National Forest Draft Land Management Plan and the draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, it is clear your team failed to review, consider, and identify planning conflicts between Otero County and your proposed plan. The Otero County Comprehensive Plan, last updated in two thousand and twenty, and the Otero County Land Use Ordinance sets forth the county's position on the, on many of the issues they've considered throughout our planning period, nevertheless, you failed to address these or even request a coordination meeting with us to work out the potential conflicts, additionally, by not coordinating, you also failed to inform the public of the county's policies and, and needs so that the public has the benefit to considering these critical issues when providing comments on your plan, both the National Forest Management Act and the National Environmental Policy Act require this level of coordination to achieve the significant environmental analysis and forest management plan that fully informs the public and the decision-makers, specifically NFMA states, Secretary of Agriculture shall develop, maintain, and appropriate revised land and resource management plans to units of the national forest system, coordinate with the, coordinate the land and resource management planning process of state and local governments and other federal agencies, this is in sixteen USC sixteen oh four A, coordination is an important requirement to intend to ensure that the state and local governments play a significant role in planning and management of national forest system resources, Congress recognizes that counties such as Otero have important land and resource planning and management responsibilities that both affect and are affected by the management of the national forest system, coordination offers an opportunity to develop mutual understanding, address resource and management issues on a wider scale and ensure consistency between the forest plans and the local plans and policies, this is particularly important to Otero County where the resource management issues significantly impact local and regional economies, Congress, Congress never intended for a county such as Otero to be limited to participating as a member of the public, from the DEIS, it is clear you went to great measures to ensure the public was involved in the process, as well as conducting government-to-government consultation with, with the tribes, however, there was no effort made by your agency to coordinate with us, as a result, the DEIS is insufficient because it failed to consider the local government positions, to resolve this insufficiency, we suggest that you prepare the supplemental DEIS that properly reviews, considers, and revolves the position... that properly reviews, considers, and revolves the position, plans, and policies of all the local government's impact by the planning decision. In order to facilitate this, we have attached a draft coordination agreement between Chavis County and your agency from the, from you to consider. This process also allows you to coordinate on the Lincoln National Forest Plan while complying with the State Open Meetings Act or laws. We hope that you will also find the important process to help harmonize the positions of the local and federal planning positions. We appreciate hearing back from you, uh, before December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any discussion on this item?
No, I'm in agreement. That'd be fine.
Give him till Friday? Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. I'll make a motion to request approval to send a letter, Travis Mosley, Lincoln National Forest Supervisor. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, if there's no other discussion on any of these items or pertaining to this, I'll call for adjournment.
Appreciate you guys coming in today and appreciate the fight and, uh, yeah, I think it's, I don't know what it's gonna be the start of, but I hope it's the start of something that at least brings us a little bit more voice and representation on that mountain up there. And Roy, appreciate all the work you did on it, too.
And I'll call Gary, Bobby, and, and see what, explain to him what's happening and see if, uh, I'm sure Bebo will probably already give him a little heads up on it, so he's aware of it, so, but I'll give him a call. All right. Short and sweet. So I guess we just have to wait for him to...
Wish we had a different president in the office right now. It'd probably be a little easier.
The redistricting letter, um, for District thirty-three, that's the one that he wrote.
Oh. Okay. Do I need to read this first?
Uh, if you want to, sure. But it's ready for signatures.
Did, has everybody seen this?
Which one is it?
We just, I just got it. That's the one for the redistricting that RB wrote, so...
Okay, for, in response to the agenda item from the other day? Okay, that's, that's fine.
I didn't speak to Senator Bird on Friday about that letter and, uh, he thought they had a deal worked out.
Did we adjourn? I don't think we adjourned, did we?
Yes, he did.
Oh, did we? Did we? Okay, okay. What was it?
Redistricting.